Good evening. Welcome to the September 10th, 2024, meeting of the Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Jeff Cassidy and call this meeting to order at 6:47. Pleased to hold this open meeting at the Dover Sherburne Middle School. Is there a live stream?
There is, yes.
Okay, and this evening we're also live streaming. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. I want to first welcome everybody back and thank all the educators and administrators for their hard work getting the school year up and running to a good start. And our first agenda item is community comments. Do we have community comments?
No, we only have one guest and he's helping present.
Okay. So moving on then, we will skip to, we're actually going to make a slight change from the initial agenda and we're going to skip to the discussion items as our first item here. And the first thing that we're going to go over is, does anybody have any changes or suggestions for our school committee norms? We put these in place a couple of years ago. It seemed to be working.
Thank you for that.
Okay, then no change on that. So we will move on to our guest. We have Brandon Hall on the phone.
Yep, so I'll do a quick introduction in that, in our last meeting Angie was talking about our large policy manual and one of our policies is of course around acceptable use of technology and media by our staff and our students. And it's very dense policy, lots of legalese for good reason. When you ask a middle schooler or high schooler or a fourth grader to sign off on it, it's kind of hard to understand what they're signing their life away to. So Mr. Brandon Hall, welcome. He is our new, yay, Director of Educational Technology and he has certainly hit the ground running and has made a lot of friends and fans in the district already. And one of the things he did first when he got here is he said, why don't we take this policy and make it student friendly? So Mr. Hall, do you want to just fill us in a little bit about this work?
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Great, yes.
I apologize. I'm calling in from Panera in Mashpee. My daughter has rehearsal for Fiddler on the Roof down here and it's not close. So I thank you for having me virtually and it's the music that you might hear in the background. It's good stuff. But I do want to say thank you to everybody for having me, for being so welcoming. I feel like I came in in July, beginning of July, I feel like I've been here for, it's only been a couple of months, but I feel like it's been at home. It's been great. And one of the things that I first looked at, as Superintendent McCoy said, was the Responsible Use and Digital Citizenship Agreement, which was originally called an Acceptable Use Policy. Most schools are moving away from acceptable use policies because they tend to be more legalese, less student-friendly, less user-friendly. And the goal is to move to a Responsible Use Agreement that focuses on digital citizenship, that talks, models positive behavior, and it moves away from the students having to look at legalese, to look at mass general law, to look at federal law. It's all well and good to mention that those are things that are important here, but at the end of the day, we want to model the behavior for students that we want to see them. So the first section is about digital citizenship and it's that the students themselves will model positive digital citizenship to each other, that they'll be honest and ethical in their digital communications and avoid things like threats and insults and gossip, especially while using school computers, but generally giving credit to authors and their sources when ideas are not their own. Knowing that things that go on the internet are on the internet for everybody to see and that they're not just something that's written on a piece of paper that can be thrown away. Not sharing personal information, thinking about who you're communicating with and how they might interpret those words. Using constructive criticism instead of being directly critical. Using respectful and appropriate language without name-calling and swearing and making other people feel uncomfortable. Fact-checking information before sharing it digitally. And then of course, not impersonating people. Those are the basics and tenets of digital citizenship. And those are the, if you notice when you look at it, it's more of the I will, I will, I will, as opposed to I will not. And that's written in a manner so that it's something that's modeled, a model of behavior. And then things like, as we move forward, learning and curiosity, using technology to learn new things, using it to complete school activities and assignments, using my device to check information to verify that it's accurate and giving credit to creators of content I don't own. And then the last is the personal responsibility and safety. If you find something that's not appropriate, sharing it with a trusted adult, taking care of the computer and the technology equipment from the school as if it belonged to me. And we're really trying to focus with students this year on taking that responsibility with the devices and materials that are given to them. And then finally respecting the district's network security measures and not trying to bypass things that are on the network. So when you look at this, long story short, when you look at this and if you compare it side by side with what was there previously, these are behaviors we want to model as opposed to punitive actions.
Great. Does anybody have questions?
I just have a comment. Thank you for putting the time into that. I thought this was a very clear and warm way to think about the policy. I loved it, especially the ending too. Beautiful. And also I think it ties in nicely with the work on restorative practice, just getting kids to recognize like, it's a tempting device, a screen, and you feel like anonymous, you feel like a little, you know, sometimes you might do things there you wouldn't do right to your friend's face, but that acknowledges all of that and tries to get kids to recognize what we are hoping to use the tools for.
Correct. And as you see this, this is the one I just talked about and the one that's in the packet is the middle school and high school draft agreement. There is a pre-K to five agreement as well that's written at that age, that age specific level.
And the other?
This also helps the parents and the caregivers as well. So it's not just for the kids, but it's also allowing parents and caregivers to truly reflect on what this means and have some really rich conversations that could lead to some even better behavior and a better understanding. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, to tie onto that, one of the things that we had found in looking at one of the products we have called LineWise, it's one of our filtering products. They have a digital citizenship platform that I was on a call with them late last week that they shared with me, that I was really impressed by. I didn't even know it existed. I'd been always using Common Sense Media. I'm not sure if others are familiar with that. That was always the one we would go to, you know, my wife and I were looking for a movie to show the kids. We would go to Common Sense Media. LineWise has their own version of that, but it's really specific to computer programs and the internet websites and apps and age appropriateness of things like Snapchat and social media that are currently fighting that war at home with our 12-year-olds. So it's hard to slide that one past that.
So the policy would still live within the manual and be overseen by the Policy Subcommittee, who will be looking at it to see if it needs any revision. This, after a second read and your approval, would go into each of the four school handbooks as something that we review with kids each September and they'd sign off on. So if you have any thoughts or feedback, please let me know and I can relay that to Brandon and he'll get you a second read at one of your upcoming meetings.
And when you said there was one for pre-K?
For five elementary, yeah.
Yeah, I can get you that.
Yeah, just so I can, I had that one to mesh them together for me.
Yep.
As the first launch of this for this year, will there be more than just a handbook? Like will it be sent out, the parents will know, et cetera, et cetera, just to have that conversation at home?
Yep, absolutely.
I think it could be really valuable for helping, I mean even strategically, just like have those conversations with your kids. So not even just at school, but also home devices and things like that. So very powerful tool.
And be using the same language as the teachers.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hall, for coming and stepping away from play rehearsal. You won't be here later, but I will make sure that everybody knows that one of your biggest surprises when you walked in the building, the district on July 1st was, we're rolling out Parent Square!
It's been great, by the way!
It's so good. Great job.
All right, thank you and we'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks, Mrs. Hall. Bye. Okay, now we'll move back to the previous order. So we'll move on to Superintendent McCoy's read.
All right, great. Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Lots of different New Years. So before I dive into give you the 30,000-foot view of the planning for the entire district, I know the region kind of already dug in at the school level with the school improvement plans at our last meeting, so if you can go rise back up to the district level. I do want to make sure that I thank everybody who worked so hard over the summer to get us ready to open the building, our custodians and our groundskeepers who are doing lots of projects, they're putting in new bleachers, replacing the grass, our IT folks, Brandon included and his team who does a lot of ordering and then rolling out new devices, food service who's getting ready to serve our students, universal breakfast and lunch this year, our central office team who is onboarding new employees, registering new students, lots of hard work there, our administrative assistants who do everything in between and support us to do our work, and most importantly, the leadership team, and that's your principals, your assistant principals, your special education coordinators, and of course Dawn, Denny, and Kate too, because this is a small district, but a large operation to run and it's all of us together as a team that make it run. So thank you to everybody here and who's listening for getting that going. All right, so here we go. Instead of looking at our launch as three separate entities, we want, Denny and I really want to make sure that you see the through line that in September, or excuse me, in August, we bring together our leadership team, which is all the principals, all the directors, all the special education leaders, and we have a retreat. And we really try not to focus on nuts and bolts, but really on the meat of teaching and learning and what we want for kids. We also have a similar retreat with our Catus 12 instructional leaders, who are teacher leaders at each grade level of the elementary school and each department at the middle and high school. And then we launch it to the teachers the first day of school that Monday. So instead of giving you three presentations, we're giving you one, so you can see that they all got a similar message and opportunities. But before we launch in August, Mr. Falcon, can you just give us an overview of some of the work that our teachers did over the summer?
Yeah, there's a lot of PD going on in the summer. The summer was extraordinarily busy with professional development. We had two workshops for our elementary teachers as we were launching our new elementary math curriculum. Our student services and special ed departments had professional development around the new IEP, which is launching this year. For our sixth and seventh grade global studies curriculum, we had PD with Investigating History and Core, co-teaching PD. We did a lot of work K-1, 2, the science of reading over the summer, a K-12 meeting to try to align all of our performing arts curriculum. High school world language is working on a new platform for kind of their practicing oral fluency and oral proficiency. So that was a big new change. Our English department is working on AI-resistant assignments, and then we were doing a lot of work around differentiation and small group instruction strategies, K-12. Beyond this, there were teachers working on revising curriculum. There were teachers that were helping onboard new staff, a lot of grade level changes at the elementary level. So even beyond just what's here, there was a lot going on this summer. So it was very, very productive and I can already see some of what we're reaping from all of the work that our teachers put in over the summer. So thank you to our educators for giving some of their time over the summer to take part in all of this professional development.
Thank you for leading it. So that takes you from mid-June when we left each other to mid-August. And then here we go, it actually, mid-July. So every summer, Denny and I have the opportunity to attend the Summer Institute for all of the superintendents in Massachusetts, and we all go down to Mashpee. We have keynote speakers, we have time with the Commissioner of Education, we have time with each other to share strategies, and it's really our time to start planning, picking up where we left off, thinking about statewide initiatives and then how we're going to mesh those with our plans moving forward. This summer, this is the first time Denny and I presented at the conference about our work in the district. So we talked about the best practices that you've been hearing a lot about and how you can take lots of initiatives and boil it down to something simple and really hope to gain momentum. We had the HOVA app, so superintendents were signing up to go to the different workshops and, you know, first you see 20, and then there's 30 people coming, and then there's 40 people coming. I'm like, Denny, I'm getting real nervous. And so we had to find a humble way to say to the organizer, I think we're going to need a better, bigger room. She's like, you'll be fine. So we had over 80 superintendents average in one classroom. And it was the only classroom in the building where the air conditioner wasn't working. But we survived and they were great and they collaborated and lots of good feedback. The PD committee for MASSS will be meeting in September, so we're looking forward to getting some constructive feedback about a workshop. For those we connected with in person, they were really excited, so.
Next time, they'll trust you.
Good word for DS. All right, and at the institute, when we had the superintendent in the room, it really gave us an opportunity to reflect on the work we've been doing for the last two years around best practices, where we took all of our educators and used to think of a really powerful learning experience. What was it like? What did it look like? What did the teacher do? What did the students do? To find all the commonalities and realize that at the end of the day, it's these nine things that happen in a classroom that make learning meaningful and powerful and that you retain that information beyond just in tests. So you've seen the best practices before, and again, we've proved it with personal experiences that we shared with the initiatives like MTSS, Challenge Success, they all agree with us. So instead of using all the edgy jargon and focusing on this language, we're doing what's best for kids. And students have also given us feedback and surveys to say, this is what works. Then we had to say, now, here we are. So what we did last year with any supervision and support is our educators took each of the nine best practices and said, okay, let's take voice for example, number two. If there was voice, if students had voice in a classroom, what would the students be doing in that circumstance? What would the teacher be doing in that circumstance? What would their activity or task look like? And outline it. So every grade level, every department at the middle and high school did this activity for all nine practices last year. So Denny ended up with over 30 sets of best practices times nine.
It was rough.
And then he spent a good portion of his summer synthesizing them. And we have landed on a unified list of look-forers for each of the nine best practices, so that it doesn't matter if you're an elementary evaluator or a secondary teacher, when you go into a classroom and look for voice, the teacher will be doing this, the student will be doing this, and the tasks should look like this, so it's common language. So that's where we left off with a superintendent said, we just finished this work, we have this beautiful document, stay tuned. And that's when we opened up our district. So we launched the district with our leaders in August and then our teachers at the end of the school year. And it's really about thinking about, how do we design experiences where students have to do the hard work? Instead of listening and absorbing, where they have to do the thinking and the creating and the making sense of information. As we launched on Monday, August 26th, our first day with our educators, you'll see why this is important in a minute, but we had some of our kiddos donate their second-to-last morning of summer vacation.
Brand new back.
Anticipation. To greet the teachers as they arrive. Those are our main roles. I told them they were supposed to be louder than the low guys, but they would.
They got intimidated.
But all the teachers walked by, they had to walk by them in order to get into the cafeteria because we locked all the other doors. And many of them appreciated seeing friendly faces, old faces, new faces, and they said it was like walking a red carpet. So the idea there is showing the importance of student voice, so hang on to that. All right, so throughout all of our summer work and at the district convocation, we've grounded ourselves in the idea that we do this work because of kids. And you heard that if you're here at the regional meeting, that we try to make decisions in the best interest of what's good for our students and how we can best move them forward. And we remind ourselves that we as educators are working with students on a future that's theirs, not ours. So how do we prepare them for their future, which is different than our current reality? And therefore, their learning experiences should not resemble what we did, because their future is much different than what we're experiencing right now. And again, my favorite quote, I've used it before, but we're currently preparing students for jobs that don't yet exist using technologies that haven't been invented in order to solve problems we don't even know are problems yet. So while many of us went to school in classrooms that look like the one on the left, we really need to be doing classrooms that look like, right, so how do we do that? So.
Right there.
We talked a little bit about AI in our last meeting, and not to put Kevin on the spot, but you mentioned something really important, which is, we're not going to be.
You're not going to lose your, the think tank thought process now is, you're not going to lose your job to AI, you're going to lose your job to the person who knows how to use AI.
Oh, yes.
And so that's how you should think about it.
Yes, and we also in our last meeting for the middle and high school talked about the yonder couches and how we're moving towards taking the smartphones and the smartwatches away from our middle school kids so that they're not distracted during the day for a number of reasons. But you all know that your kids and mine, technology has really changed the way that they interact with information, the way they interact with each other, and the way they interact with the world. So what does that mean for education? Because if we continue to do things the same way, we're all going to be out of a job. Educators are no longer the sole source of information, so to stand at the board and deliver information makes no sense, because kids have a million other places to get it. They need to help us make sense of it. And students have a million ways to give us the information or complete the projects we ask them to do. So how do we create authentic opportunities for students to show what they know and can do? We really have to think about doing education differently. So we said, how do we do this? We have these students who are involved in technology all the time. They are teaching us how to use it. How do we solve this problem of moving education forward? And we said, we ask them. So we went back to the idea of using student voice, because research shows that students who feel like they have a voice in their school are seven times more likely to be academically and socially emotionally in a good place. And so hence, the student voice, as teachers entered, the importance of having students and energy, and that we're doing this work for kids. So we brought students to the work that we did this summer with the district leaders, with our instructional leaders, and we'll continue to do that throughout the year. So here we are at our leadership retreat and our teacher leadership retreat, talking with kids and asking them for their advice about what teaching and learning should look like. We started this work by thinking about these three essential questions. Why does student engagement matter? How engaged are our students here in DS? And how can we increase student engagement in this world where technology and AI is at your fingertips? So together, we defined what is engagement? So of course, we went to Google and we Googled it and AI came up with this beautiful definition of engagement that describes the level of interest, curiosity, attention, and motivation students show when they're learning. Then we talked about what does that look like in the classroom? We're luckily in Dover Sherburne, we do not have resistance. For the most part, our kids are engaged in the learning and doing what they're asked to be doing. And we move up to engagement, where they start to take ownership of their learning and, you know, ask their own questions, create their own projects to empowerment, where they're perhaps even teaching or leading lessons. And we had a great conversation about the difference between compliance and engagement. Doing what you're asked to do because you have to and doing something else because you want to. We looked at research. There's lots and lots of research out there. I told our students, do never make a slide like this. This is bad. But what it shows is there's lots and lots of research out there. I did color code it though. The three themes is that when the students are engaged, they have higher academic achievement, they have improved health and wellness, and that they are engaged in learning that is deeper and it provides an opportunity for them to really have enduring understanding of the material, so they remember it beyond that test. So then we said, well, how are our kids doing? Nationally, you look, the green bar is student engagement. So nationally, across the country, you'll notice from fifth grade through 12th grade, student engagement drops. Nationally, if you dig a little deeper into this, you will see that 60% of our students in the US are either doing school because they have to, tell me what I have to do, check the box, so I get to move on to the next grade, or completely disengaged. And 40% of our students are engaged because they think it's important for their future or fully engaged because they think it's interesting and fun too. So the majority of national students, 40%, are engaged. It's the others that we're worried about. But Dover Sherburne, we tend to be a little above the curve. So where are we? So we looked at our Challenge Success survey data from last year, and you will notice that we're a little bit better than the national norm. The middle school, 58% of our students are purposefully or fully engaged, which is better than the 40. And at the high school, 43% of our students are purposely or fully engaged, which is good news, but there's certainly room for improvement. So we asked our kids, what could this look like? So they thought of examples in their K to 12 educational experience where they were fully engaged. We have lots of examples. Here's just a few. Eighth grade mock trial, for those of you who've had students do that, definitely a memorable experience, but being able to talk about an issue of importance today, be able to look at it from different lenses and then debate about it. So an example of using student voice. Another example, back in elementary school, when students were learning the capitals and the states, giving students an array of ways to learn them, whether it's flashcards, whether it's whiteboards, whether it's songs, so that students could figure out what kind of learner they were and use the strategy that worked best for them as opposed to forcing one strategy on everybody. So an example of individualization. Coming out of that, we said, okay, if this is the data from Challenge Success that 58 or 43% of our kids are engaged and the rest are not, how can we do better? So they came up with lots of ideas along with the principals and teachers sitting beside them. Here's some recommendations that we'll think about moving forward. Create more spaces for collaboration, which you know we're doing. Established advisories, we're working on that. Reduce the number of required courses. We certainly want our students to have every opportunity after they graduate from Dover Sherburne, but perhaps do they not need to take X many courses in some subject? Or should they be more interdisciplinary? So something to think about. They loved giving feedback, so can we do that more often? They want us as adults to adapt to new technology faster. They want to know why they're learning something. Why is this important? What else? If they're interested in something, can you take a lesson and kind of move it in that direction? Yes, the content has to change, but can you at least tie it into something relevant to them? Think about the different needs of learners. We've heard from students that perhaps didn't have the learning style they need or the sports that they need from the class, so how can we continue to differentiate? Assess students in more than one way. It shouldn't all be paper and pencil tests. We should give students different opportunities and options to show what they've learned. Connect topics to the real world, because of course, why else learn it? Create more opportunities for group work. They love collaboration. And allow choice where possible. So it's fascinating about, after three days, three full days of working with over 30 students, these were their recommendations. And what they told us was these nine things all over again. If we're doing these nine best practices, then they are going to have the deep learning and the engagement that we're hoping for. It's also what Ben Franklin told us 300 years ago. So we've landed in the same place. I need to continue to try to do the same thing. So what we're saying is, the ones who do the work in the classroom, the thinking, the creating, the analyzing, the talking, they're the ones doing the learning. If the teacher's doing all the thinking at the front of the room, the kids are probably not learning at that deep level. So we want our kids to be explorers, innovators, problem solvers, in order to prepare them for their future, which we don't know quite what that will look like. And what does that mean for us as educators? It means that we have to do something computers can't do, which is work with children individually, work with children and students in small groups, listen to what they're saying and learning, observe, respond, give them feedback, correct them, and connect with them. So really, the classrooms moving forward should be looking more like that second picture, kids working together in groups and teachers facilitating and walking around and supporting. So we need to go back to these nine best practices, because once again, our students have said, they work. Luckily, Denny has synthesized his 300 pages of documents. We have look-forers in all nine areas, so we know what the students should be doing, what the teacher should be doing, what the activity should look like, and we just need to start doing that more often in the classroom. So that's where our work this year is going to start, is really focusing on making those best practices more relevant, more current, more frequent in our classrooms. Coming off of this, I just want to mention that the activities that we did, that I talked about, about looking at the Challenge Success survey data from last year, which yes, does look at student engagement, but it also looks at academic integrity and AI, extracurricular involvement, grades, health and stress, homework, parent expectations, sleep and support. We are going to, actually on September 18th, all of our educators are using that half-day to do that same activity that everybody did this summer. And then at the middle and high school, we're going to have our students go through that data too and try to make sense of it and tell us their stories behind that data. So we're trying to get all stakeholders involved in this process, and then we will do a presentation about the Challenge Success data holistically this winter, probably at your January meeting. Into that, we will tie in start times, because certainly, the delay in start times or the flip was a result of Challenge Success. So is it working based on our data? So let's look at that. Great. Other opportunities to elevate student voice. Denny and I are going to be starting a student advisory council. We love hearing kids and their ideas, so looking at policies, looking at practices, looking at classroom activities that work for them. Denny and I have been to two of the four schools to their large group assemblies to launch these ideas, and we've already gotten emails from kids who are interested and certainly want to make sure we get a wide variety of voices and faces at those meetings. We're going to launch an I wish campaign, which is something that is supported by Challenge Success. It's a students, opportunity for students to quietly write feedback saying, I wish my parents knew that I hated piano, or that I'm really stressed out, or that I need a new dog, or I wish my teacher knew that I hate being cold-called in class, or I really love our projects. So how can they get their voices out to us as parents and to their teachers to really understand what their experience is like and how we can better support them? And the other thing that we're doing is we are allowing any educator in the district to shadow a student. And the other thing that we're doing is we are allowing any educator in the district to shadow a student for a day. So whether it's an elementary, middle, or high school teacher, they can choose a student at any of those levels where they want to go back and see what elementary school kids are doing before they come up to the high school, or if they want to look forward and see what they're doing at high school, or just someone in their own building. They're going to shadow them for a day just to remember what it's like to be doing something for six hours and how teaching and learning has changed and still needs to change moving forward. During all of this process, Denny and I tried to model in our three days of workshops, the best practices and we asked for feedback and which ones we nailed and which ones we can work better on. We did pretty well. Room for growth. We'll get there. And then we asked for feedback on all of our retreats. And no surprise, when you look at the feedback, some of the areas of strength, hearing from students is extremely helpful. We can learn best from their experiences and their feedback. Working with students, speaking with students, love the kids, working with students, talking with students, hearing students, meeting with students. I mean, that was the theme. They just loved having the kids there. So how can we provide more opportunities for teachers and staff to be able to listen to kids? Areas for growth, we needed a little bit more movement, a little too much work at the tables. They wanted a wider range of student voices. Was everybody represented among those kids? And how do we make sure that voices that weren't there are there next time? And then just making sure that we take this work and don't say, oh, that was just a summer project, but how do we keep this going? You're amazing because you lead by example. You offer a sense of safety, vulnerability, honesty, joy, commitment, and completely believe and understand we are here because kids. Thank you for your continued professionalism and inspiration. Your leadership far exceeds all expectations. But at this point, just thinking about the adaptive leadership pieces and the teaching and learning piece before we get into the nuts and bolts. Are there any comments or questions, suggestions?
I just had a quick comment. I noticed in the examples of like what is a time students felt engaged that it didn't involve technology per se. I mean, the way I interpreted it, I don't know if that was a theme, but I think that's just something to think about, like connecting with each other. Apart from, because we spend so much time on the devices and I know that that's so important for learning, but also it seems like it's still really important even in this day of technology that I don't understand that people are having direct connection with each other.
That's an excellent point. Yep. Okay, we'll go over to the technical side. So Dawn was busy all summer facilitating projects and rolling over financial books and starting new ones. So thank goodness she does all of this really hard work behind the scenes. So here's chickering. They have some new floors in addition to a fire control panel, which I did not take a picture of. Pine Hill School, for those of you who have been there, they do have new floors in the kitchen. They also have an emergency management system upgrade, but they also have this HGTV makeover that happened. If you have not been there or you used to be a parent at Pine Hill, you'll notice it's a different place. It is airy and fresh and bright, decluttered. It's really incredible. So I encourage you to go visit.
No more plexiglass. It's life changing.
Things are really color coded. It's great. Here at the middle school, here on the left, you see upstairs in the big window area is some of our new collaborative furniture that we have with the students working at benches. We also have high top tables in some of the places where there used to be lockers, which is super exciting. And then here used to be on the right, the really large band room. So for those of you who have been to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band concerts with Mr. Dupre, he's got a really large space. Now it's half that size because we've created two classrooms where one used to be because we were running out of classroom space. Music department has not suffered at all. In fact, they have beautiful new space up in the coral room. We're getting new risers that can be moved so they can move and go, and it's just been a really positive thing. So.
We're actually to donate the old risers to a program that is like beyond excited, but you know how bulky they were. So now we've the collapsible ones. So they came today. When they get built, everyone can go upstairs.
And come to a concert.
Is our enrollment up that we're running out of classrooms?
It's no, it's the programs, all the special education programs that we're starting, these spaces that we have for kiddos.
And that's what came out of the space audit too, was we needed more individual, like small breakout spaces. And not that we have more kids, we just need more defined spaces for small groups and such.
This used to be the office for the library and now it is a conference room space for students and teachers to gather.
We hired the fourth counselor. So that sort of bumped. So yes, we put a new door.
John's like, there's a hole in the wall and it better be fixed. And at the high school, a little less exciting, but very important, we updated the bathrooms in Link was common, so you'll see that on the right. And our new bleachers are here. So super exciting universally accessible bleachers. And we're hoping, fingers crossed, that we'll be able to sit in them at this Friday's first home game for the football team against Sharon. So I encourage you all to come. New staff orientation, Denny?
Yes, one of my favorite days of the whole year is the day that we get to welcome all of our new staff to Dover Sherburne. So we have that on the Tuesday, the 20th. This year, we have a elementary mentor leader and a secondary mentor leader, which is nice that we are separating the programs so it can be more, so it can address more of the specific needs of our elementary teachers, which is our secondary meter teachers. The two questions that we use to focus our new staff orientation, what are the mission and values of Dover Sherburne? So we did really fun, interactive thought museum activity where we had things like the portrait of the graduate, best practices, challenge success. Our MTSS model hung around the room and teachers went around with post-its and were writing questions. Because that's one of the things that is always interesting is when we bring new people on board, how do they begin to learn about these terms like best practices that we're throwing around? So we're kind of letting them kind of onboard knowing these. Then we focused on the second question. So who are the students and the families that make Dover Sherburne special? So we looked at demographic information from the district, you know, listened to student voices and so that staff could, a lot of the staff that came on board weren't new to teaching. They were coming from other districts. So what are the things about Dover Sherburne that make things unique rather than guarantee it towards like brand new teachers? So it's a really exciting day and, you know, it's just, it's always fascinating to see the excitement and the ideas that people have as they're getting started in the district and just all the things that people are bringing from other places to Dover Sherburne. So it was a really nice launch. And then we followed up with monthly meetings that we have with all the new staff. So this month we'll do one on diversity, equity, inclusion. We do one on the supervision valuation process, student services. So that every month our new staff as a cohort are learning a little bit more about Dover Sherburne.
Thank you. Of course, we not only welcome our new educators, of which we had 36, coming into this school year and other people in other roles such as guidance counselors, behavior specialists, et cetera. We also recognize the teachers who, as of August 28th, started their fourth year, which means they now have professional teaching status in the district. So we have Ashley O'Leary and a ring, Molly Sullivan, Christine Yuminsky, Sarah Altman, and Hillary Havener that are professional teachers at Dover Sherburne now. And we also want to thank the educators who just completed 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service, which is really incredible. And I thank Mark and Angie for being at the opening day convocation to thank these educators and give them their apples. So from chickering, Mary Ann Fabian, Nisha Hochman, Kathy Gillis, Nancy Powers, Pine Hill, we have Kelly Hodge and Ed Ryan, Nicole Dara, Emily Gerd, and Pam Ritchie. The middle school, we have Jack Waters, Brett McCoy, Carmel Bergeron, Tom Dupre, Wendy Lutz, Tori Milburn, Tony Milburn, and Kathy Semenow. And then at the high school, Eric Schwenderman, Lisa Brodsky, Darren Buck, Liz Friedman, Beth Hecker, Erin Newton, Liz Minotti, John Hickey, and Elliot Lucille. And then from the district, Lisa Sawal, who works with the community ad program. And I think what's great about this list is it's not only educators, but it's also our custodians, food service staff, and administers who all contribute years and years of service to the district. We're going to stay preparedness is something that we always have to keep at the forefront as we start off a new school year. So we have a district-wide response team that meets twice. It's there twice. And we're, well, and as needed, if more often, but we're officially meeting tomorrow morning with all of our district leaders and our chiefs of police come and join us as well to talk about the systems and protocols we have in place, any new findings or things in the field that we need to be aware of and make sure that any of the changes and adaptations that we needed to make to our buildings have gotten done since the last time we talked. Each school has their school response team, emergency team that meets the beginning of the year and then after every drill so that we can debrief with our teachers and the people on the ground about what worked and what didn't. And then of course, we have training with our students. So first three days of school, we have a fire drill, we practice evacuating a bus. And then we'll have additional fire drills throughout the year. And then in October and November, at each of the schools, we'll practice a shelter in place and a lockdown at a developmentally appropriate level, which we've talked about before as a team. Parents square, very exciting. So this is what the platform looks like. If you're looking at it on a computer, you have the posts, you can look at your messages, you have the calendar. Any files or pictures end up there too, so everything's in one place. And you can toggle between schools if you have children in more than one place. So far, we've gotten lots of positive feedback. Currently, 1,044 parents on Parents Square, which is about 48% of our parent population. So not bad. And Brandon Vmet and some of our other IT members are going to be at each of the four open houses at a table, encouraging people to download Parents Square and helping them to do that.
Is there a different adoption than Blooms? Like where?
It's very similar. Blooms is just chickering specific.
No, sorry, I meant the general adoption. So we have 50% who've done Parents Square. Did we have like 80% on Blooms before?
It's a good question. But yeah, again, the difference being just chickering versus K to 12. So you activate the account, you download the app, you got to set your preferences. So do you want to know in the moment when someone sends a post or do you want everything brought to your, you know, phone or email at 6:30 PM? Because you'd rather get it all at once. So all of the settings that you can set, certainly if there's an emergency, either ourselves at the district level or principals can override all of that and say, everybody needs to know this right now on text, text, and email and voice. So we will no longer have school messenger and a lot of other programs where, you know, Denny, Dawn and I were like, all right, what do we use for what? And here's the emergency and we're, you know, trying to get this done fast. Now it's all Parents Square. It makes it so simple.
Is that where you'll do like schools canceled for snow days or delays or whatever?
You know, we're having a lockdown drill.
I chose not to pick that example, but yes.
But you can appreciate posts. You can comment on what people are putting up there. You can sign up to volunteer. You can sign up to donate tissues. You can sign up for your parent teacher conferences all in one place. You can join groups if you want to all of a sudden follow what the Guidance Advisory Council is doing and get their emails. Students, the directories are no longer going to be the Pine Hill hard copies or the electronic middle and school copies. Everybody, equity purposes, who signs up for Parents Will have access to their school's directory of parents and students. Parents and students who do not want to be in the directory, they can opt out through ASVMP when you do your verification each year. So we will make sure those people are removed so that they're not open to the public. But otherwise, everybody has access to their school directories and it makes it much simpler to monitor. And then certainly, I don't know if you've noticed, but you can go to your child's class and it'll list your teacher if you're at the elementary level or at the secondary level, if you have multiple teachers, it lists them and you can just hit the message button and send them an email, like so easy. So lots there. And again, a reminder to please set your notifications. If you don't know how to do that, I'll be sending out again at the Q's a short video or stop by the help desk at Open House.
There was a question about the directory. Is there going to be addresses as well or is it just emails?
Just email.
Because we do get addresses in Directory Spot, which I know is a big draw. That question may come up.
Certainly you can continue to do that if you'd like. Yeah. Okay, so moving on from Parents Square, holidays and homework.
Yes, so last year after we had our whole calendar task force, one of the recommendations that Superintendent McCoy and the calendar task force had was to convene another committee to look at the policies we had around giving work and assessments around religious and cultural holidays. So last year, at the end of the year, I convened a committee of administrators, educators, and students that came together to talk about this topic. So the three essential questions that guided the work that we did, how can we make students feel more comfortable requesting accommodations for religious and cultural holidays? What policies and procedures should be put in place in order to facilitate that communication? And how do we ensure that there's consistency and accountability amongst all stakeholders across the district? So we reviewed all of the data and the work that the calendar task force looked at. We took a look at DESI guidelines. We looked at each of the four school handbooks of existing policies. We looked at our school committee policies and then we took a look at other public schools in the area and their policies around this. And as a result of that, we made some recommendations. So the next slide. First one is to adopt a framework that outlines specific religious and cultural holiday work policies as a pilot for this school year. So the full policy, and this is just a short snippet of the chart, lays out a full chart of religious and cultural holidays and clearly spells out when teachers can and cannot assign work or give assessments. And that was one of the things that the educators wanted was they just wanted to know, like, what are the dates that are off limits for me? I can put them in my plan book and make sure that I'm not giving assessments or I'm not, I, you know, can't assign homework on these specific nights. So we're going to pilot that for this year and then get feedback in the spring and we can make suggestions for the following years. I think notable on the list of the holidays that you'll see, three of the holidays that were brought to the attention of the calendar task force last year. So Eid, Voly, and Lunar Year are included on this list of ones that we're trying to not give assessments or work over. So the committee came to that consensus that they wanted to honor the requests from the community in that way. And for those students and families that don't celebrate those holidays, it's just a nice break for not knowing you're not going to have work on those days. The second recommendation is we want to make sure that students and parents and caregivers are aware of these new policies so they can advocate for themselves and know kind of what their rights are. And the last part for our policy people here is we made a recommendation that the school committees revise our current school committee policy. Right now it just says religious holidays, so we just want to add on cultural holidays as well. So those were the three recommendations for the committee and we will see how things go for this year and then reassess in the spring.
Quick question going on. So I know that Diwali is not a holiday in our school, but usually we celebrate it the day when the kids come back from school. So if the day of Diwali is, say, first of November, so we would celebrate it in the evening. That goes on till late. So I'm trying to understand what this means when they say that when teachers are not giving any assignment due on the day of Diwali. It will make sense, I mean, to me or to my family, if there is nothing due the day after. So they are not slogging while we are, you know, celebrating, you know, you're doing something. After school in the evening is when Diwali is celebrated. We don't do anything in the daytime because they're in school. So the next day, if there's something due the next day or a test next day, they would be not celebrating and preparing for the test.
That's generally accurate for the Jewish holidays as well, not unilaterally, but.
Not that day, but the next day would be more helpful for the.
Just to add, technically, Diwali this year is on Halloween. So that is the next day. I don't know why it says, but yeah, that is actually the next day. Granted, we probably won't celebrate on Halloween, but and then the next day is a Friday, so it actually works out this year.
Yeah, we did try and then we might just have to make some adjustments. We did try to say it was on the day of and the day after so that students didn't have to stress out about coming back the day after. So that's the intention of it. I don't know if it, the dates might just need to get.
Thank you so much.
And then in terms of gathering feedback, what are some steps around that?
Yep. So I mean, I think we'll hear some feedback. We'll gather feedback from the students. One of the things that some of the high school teachers were nervous about is that when you black out some of these specific dates, is that going to make it so that students have more tests or assignments clustered around certain dates now versus them being spread out? So we'll get feedback from the students on a survey in the spring. And then I'm guessing through Parents Square, we'll send things out to families in the spring as well to see how, if, you know, we feel like teachers and educators are honoring these policies and if they have feedback on this chart. One of the things that is below this chart is a section for, you know, what are the expectations for educators? What are the expectations for the students, for the families, and then for administrators? So hopefully, we are all living up to those things this year.
And the full policy is in the packet?
Yes.
Somebody who has high school kids could probably ask this question better than I could. But my memory is that there's something related to sports and if you miss a practice, there could be an impact on a game. Is that a component of this policy as well?
So the athletic department sends out a memo similar to this and on any day that we do not have school, it is, there aren't practices and then there are no penalties for students who miss other days for cultural.
Do you have a way, like maybe working with the AD of overseeing that? Sorry, sticky question.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is, you know, continuing our, to have the dialogue with the athletic director and the high school principal. I think getting some feedback from students and families, maybe anonymously through surveys to see if it's working. But by elevating student voice, we already have a number of students who are giving us feedback about, oh, this doesn't work and this isn't going to work. So how can we use that data? So hopefully, opening the doors to getting that information.
That's great.
Seems like a good compromise. It's a good path forward.
So we'll see how it goes and, you know, again, will this. And, you know, again, will this create clusters of stressful times at other points in the year? We'll have to wait and see. All right, and this is a reminder, the next three Thursdays, you can be very busy at our open houses. And if you want to go to Chickering and Pine Hill at the same time, I encourage you to try to figure out how to do that. Luckily, you don't have to worry about that. Denny and I have to worry about that.
I'll put in one plug for the open houses. So at the elementary levels, starting at 5:30, we're going to be doing an information session on the new math curriculum. So if parents and caregivers have questions or just want to get an overview of what the components of math lessons are going to look like, those will be starting at 5:30 in person. We'll also be recording them, so people can't make them, we'll be sending out a recording of that presentation. Again, we just want to make sure that people are getting the information they need about the new math curriculum.
And I know, I'm sure we'll send stuff out via email in Parents Square, or maybe just Parents Square to get people there. But will we also be sending particularly for the new math curriculum and parents, information home with the kids? And I'm asking because I know we often get people who say, oh, I had no idea. Acknowledging people get a lot of emails.
Yes, I'm going to check in with the building leaders, but the curriculum comes with kind of letters home. So they check in and give the information.
I know there's the balance with sustainability and stuff like that, but I think it's a pretty big change. And feels like if we meet people where they are, most people are, I'm assuming, looking at their kids' folders and stuff. It might be a good option, at least for this one.
Good point. Okay, so then off we're running and happy to take questions or concerns, but want to end on a positive note, which is this book that I love. Student Voice is already there. It's not like we have to create it. We just have to stop and listen to it. So as we're doing all these technical things and, you know, the unforeseen happens and there's surprises and changes, we need to stay focused on what's really important. And yes, we have to run the trains on time and make sure everybody's safe. And we want to make sure that we're listening to student voice this year. That's the goal. We'll connect back in April. Any questions or comments, open to any of them.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the work you've done, what the result from the calendar task force. And I think this is exactly what we were hoping we would see when we came back in the fall. And I applaud you guys for the work you've done for this on top of everything else. Really gratifying to see that there will be some, hopefully some real meaningful changes for the students.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you guys. So moving on, don't know that we had action items. Consent items, the only thing we have here is the approval of our last joint school committee meeting from June 11th. Do we do each of the individual ones for?
Yes, we'll have to do each committee.
Okay. Can I have, can I have a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to approve the minutes from June 11th?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
All right, Christine. Do you want to do Sherborne first, Christine?
Could I have a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to approve the June minutes as documented in this draft?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca, we have a second.
Kristin Aberley, second?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So fascinating.
Mark?
Sure. Could I have a motion to approve the joint school committee meetings from June 11th as documented in this draft? Second?
Kate Potter, second.
Kate Potter, second? All approved. All approved.
Okay, now for the Dover School Committee, do I have a motion to approve minutes?
Marthe Castle, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Kate Cook, second?
All in favor? Okay, so we have now approved the minutes from June 11th. And I skipped over an item here, superintendent comments, district and superintendent goals.
Yes, I should have followed my presentation, but in your packet, you have my proposed goals for the district this year as well as mine as a superintendent. No surprise, I know we don't have to read to you, it's already in your packet. District goal number one is around implementing those best practices and finding those look fours in the classroom. District two is about student voice and how can we elevate that so we better understand their experience? Student three, through month communication, i.e. Parents Square, and continuing to update the website. And then for myself, the goal around making sure I'm supporting principals and pushing them to give really constructive feedback so we make sure that we're moving these best practices forward in the classroom. And then secondly, continuing to network with other superintendents. I'm in my third and last year of the new superintendent induction program. So I will finish the year out working on the consultancy protocol and problems of practice. And I also gained entrance into the Leading Now program. So I'm actually going to be away part of next week in Chicago with superintendents from across the country. It's all expenses paid, opportunity to network with superintendents from around the country on similar problems that we're dealing with as well as unique opportunities to get feedback from others and really work on strategy to gain stakeholder trust and feedback, but also communicate out what's going on in the district. So stay tuned on that.
All right.
Open to feedback though.
All right. Thank you. So then we can move on. We have, does anybody have any items they want to call out now for our next joint meeting in January? So between now and then, I'm sure some items will come up. Please direct them to me or Beth in the meantime.
And we'll, Denny and I will give an update on our progress this year and the goals, as well as hopefully by then, our students, our educators, and any interested parent community members will have sifted through the challenge success data themselves and we'll do a formal presentation.
Now can I adjourn by unanimous consent to any of each of the committees?
I would do each of the committees, I guess.
Could I please have a motion to adjourn for the Sherborne School Committee?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Becca, you have a second?
Kristin Aberley, second?
Thank you, Kristin. All in favor? Thank you all, motion passes.
Mark?
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn for the regional school committee? Kevin, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Okay, Dover, can I have a motion for adjourn?
Marthe Castle, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Kate Cook, second?
All in favor?
What would happen if somebody, one committee didn't?
Stuck here, no exit.